Mr. Russ Hall and Mr. John Strauk. So, we're going to give each of them an opportunity to address the council. So first, we'll call on Mr. Russ Hall. Good evening, Russ. Come on up to the podium.
I want a chicken alba. This is probably stupid, but the power lines, you know, from one end of Lincoln all the way down to the other side, down to Arby's and stuff, when the power goes out, it's all out and all those businesses can't do anything. And in Burnsville, where I used to live in the cities, they buried theirs. And I think they got a lot of help from the power company and they both worked on it. So, and in Florida, they had that big disaster. And one town didn't get any power loss because they had already planned for it. There we go. Okay, there's bikes that get stolen and I've had two stolen in front of our house that we found. And an officer came out and I asked him, "Do you sell those for like the policeman's ball or something?" You know, and he said, "We throw them in the dump." And they just sit there forever. And so, I said, "You should like give them to people that don't have a bike or sell them and do something." And he said that he tried that, but they wouldn't let him because someone could go come by and say, "That's my bike and why you ride my bike." But I know they have licenses. So if you have a license, they can find who the owner is. But if you don't have a license, then maybe you have 30 days or something to claim it. But the bikes I found were very expensive and now they're in the dump. One of them was maybe up to $500. Obviously, somebody had stolen it. He said, "It doesn't matter how expensive they are or anything." Okay, you guys, in order to have this meeting, to see it on TV on public access, you have to have the premium package. And that guy like 12,000 channels, you know, we all do. I don't need the premium package and I know many people that can't afford it and don't need it and none of them can see the meeting. So can you tell it to somebody about that?
Sure, is that, just a question there, Russ. Is that with one of the local providers? Which provider is that? I'm not familiar with how that works.
Yeah, ask Jamie Francis.
All right, we'll ask.
Because he's the one that said, "mention it."
Yeah.
It's all his fault.
We'll talk to Jim.
Okay, so. Well, that's all, I guess.
Isn't it on YouTube?
You guys are doing a great job and I'm going to vote for everybody here probably twice. Don't contest the election and we'll have more problems.
Vote early and vote often, right?
And I think you guys should all get a raise, so all in favor?
Thank you very much, Russ. Good night.
I thought I was going to faint, you guys are so scary.
Thanks, Russ. All right. John Strauk will ask you to come up. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council members. It's came to my attention recently, I was up at the RTC doing some physical therapy, walking around the building. And while I was doing that at a couple of times, I came across a couple of different people that were up checking out the building. One was a fellow who did some racing. He said every time he was in town, he came up there. He was just loved the building and he was really appreciative about it. This other lady, her husband was getting some analysis at the hospital and she'd checked out Fergus Falls and she'd heard about the RTC, so she came up there. And she was just really amazed at the building. Well, since the state gave us that building, I've been involved trying to figure out a way to save it. Since day one, we've had a, the whole process was fix the whole thing or none at all, which means you're going to have to have $100 million or so. Well, that never worked. And all the different things that have been tried and processed, looked into, has never worked. Well, I'm not sure how much the state gave Fergus Falls to maintain that building and to work with it. But I think a lot of that's gone. I met with the city administrator here a while back and I told him, I said, "There's an issue here that we need to address before all the money's gone." Because unless you guys want to tear it down, and here's the thing, you get, we get new council members every four years. So, somebody comes in, they deal with it for a little while, it pops up and then it gets brought back down and a council person gets reelected or maybe someone else will come in and take their place. So nobody's really been working this issue. There is a hole in the roof on the south side, straight across from the motor vehicle where the fencing is all there. That literally, every time it rains, every winter when it snows, you have water pouring in to the building. I've been in the construction business for 35 years. If you have a leaky roof, you have serious problems. That hole in itself is like, come on, really? You just leave that there? Do you want to destroy this building? Because that's what it's looking like. If you want to probably preserve it or make it last till something can happen, then I suggest somebody get a hold of, this is an idea I came up with, you get a hold of the fire department. You put it on as a drill. They take their truck with the boom truck and you go up there and you put a piece of plywood over the hole. I mean, it's that simple to fix this problem. Otherwise, you're going to, and I don't know how long that's been. That's the question I want to know, is how many years has that been like that? And dripping in there and moisture coming down, of course, you're going to have issues inside. I mean, if you took and left a hole in your roof here, how long you think before you're going to have problems? And there's literally a tree growing out of the front part of the wall. All the gutter systems in the older part have never been cleaned. They're neglected. So you've got water coming in from every different angles. So my question is, do you want to try to save this building and find something to do with it, considering it was basically here since the beginning of Fergus Falls? Or do you want to tear it down? Because when you're neglecting it, you're basically saying you don't care about the building. And if you're going to tear it down, you better think twice about what it's going to cost. Because each year it's going up and up and up. And who's going to pay for it? So, you know, I ask that you take the time, drive up there, see the hole and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. With that, we'll take a short break. Good evening, everyone. We would ask that you all please rise as Pastor Johnson from Calvary Free Lutheran Church leads us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Lord, I want to thank you for our city council members, our mayor, city administration and staff. Thank you for their willingness to give them themselves, to serve. And I pray for your blessing and encouragement for them. Lord, I thank you that we live in the land of the free. Thank you for the freedoms that we have to vote, to speak our minds, to disagree. Lord, those freedoms are easily taken for granted. And you call us to use our freedoms to love and serve one another. And so we pray that you would help us to seek what is good, what is right, what is true. I pray for this meeting. Lord, council members are often faced with difficult decisions, issues that have both pros and cons, constituents on both sides of debates. So I pray that they would have good information and discernment and be able to act with wisdom. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30, October 17th, 2022. And we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls Council. To order a roll call, please. Yeah?
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. Thank you. A couple of changes. Number six on the consent agenda regarding the golf course, we're going to remove that from the meeting this evening and bring that back to a future committee of the whole. With the second quote that we discussed last Wednesday, there's some additional conversation that has to happen. So we'll remove that. And then, under item K, reports from staff and administrative officers, we'll have a new item, a letter of intent for the city-owned parking lot adjacent to the Shopko building. And there's a memo and letter of intent on your desks this evening related to that item.
All right. Add one item, remove another. And I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, I'll make that second.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Brent. On favor. It's close.
Anthony.
Sorry, Anthony and Brent, sorry. On favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Under public hearings this evening, we have two public, we have one public hearing and we'll need two resolutions. The public hearing will be for the housing tax rebate at 3216 Pebble Shores Drive and also at 728 Oak Trail. We will call on our community development manager Clara Beck to lead us through that discussion. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you. I feel like it's been a while since I've been in front of you with a tax abatement request, but we have two this evening that may, they may need separate public hearings, so we might just have to do them separately. But the first is for 728 Oak Trail. That is a single-family home that is going to be $450 estimated value when it is completed. The second is for 3216 Pebble Shores Drive, which is estimated at $1.8 million. The application itself, if you looked through that for that one, does have a different number given. But after some back and forth with the county, because the application itself was difficult to read, Sarah Shaky of the county did speak with the homeowner directly about that value and they did say verbally it is $1.8 million. So that is the value that we have been given and we'll go with tonight. I have received nothing from the public about these two after the notification period, but would hope that we could open it up to public hearing tonight and then any discussion that you might have.
Thank you, Clara. And we will do that at this point. We will open the public hearing first. We'll have two public hearings. First, public hearing will be for 728 Oak Trail. This is for a housing tax rebate for that property. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to that issue, please step to the lectern and state your name. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and we will bring it back to the council where we will look for a resolution approving that housing tax rebate for 728 Oak Trail.
I'll off it up.
Thank you. Krista?
Second that.
Thank you. Tom? Any discussion by the council? Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Next, we will open a public hearing for 3216 Pebble Shores Drive. Anyone wishing to speak to that property, please step to the lectern and state your name. Seeing no one, we will bring it, close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
I'll off it up, Your Honor.
Now we have a resolution and a second.
I'll off that.
Jim and Krista, thank you. Go ahead, Anthony.
I would just say that I think this is where we need to look at, you know, there's $2 million worth of homes plus and we're giving these people obviously a $5,000 rebate. And then we should still look at how can we take that money and better put it to a lower-income house? You know, and people struggle to get into homes that are in that $200, $250,000 range. And to my mind, that's something that we should actually look at is, you know, somebody building a $1.8 million does not need $5,000 worth of credit from the city. But somebody that's trying to get into their first home could do with that assistance financially. So I think at some point in time, you know, that would be a good discussion to have.
Thank you, Anthony. Any other comments? Yes, Scott.
I just wanted to agree with Anthony on this one, but it's something that we've visited about before. That perhaps when, we made this commitment and we need to stick with it, so I'll be supporting it in this case. But at the last conversation that we had with this, we said that when the time comes to review this, you know, when our commitment for this window of time is up, we probably need to maybe cap at a high end what this ought to be. Because when we're talking $400,000 houses, that's probably, you know, generous of the city. When we're talking $1.8 million houses, that's probably being too generous, I would say. But we need to keep our commitment through the time period that we said we would.
Thank you, Scott. And just as a reminder, Clara, the timeframe for the, is it a 2022 program at this point that will be reauthorized by the councils at the, or what will be looked at, I should say, by the council to consider reauthorization?
I would say council is able to relook at the program at any point. Our commitment at this time, we have matched what the county timeline is and they have actually extended their application period through 2024 at this point, so.
So it's something the council can look at at any time.
And just, I would say staff are also aware of the fact that the requests that come in are generally for the higher price point homes in town. And now that we have our communications manager on board, one of the conversations we've been having internally is doing some sort of push for the program to let homeowners know that this is also eligible for renovations, major renovations, to maybe aging housing stock, which is part of the intent of the program that we haven't seen tapped into here in Fergus Falls. So we do want to do a push for that now that we've got a dedicated staff person who can help with that.
Thank you, Clara. Any other comments from the council? We have a resolution in a second. Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Thank you, Clara. There are no bids to award this evening or petitions or communications to consider under the consent agenda. We have seven items, considering that we have removed item number six. There's seven remaining items. If anyone would like to speak to any of those items individually, we can remove them. Seeing no one, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda.
I'll off it up.
Presented, thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you. Caroline, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have a resolution approving the matching sources for the state bond funds and the grant agreement for the Phase One Downtown Riverfront project. And I will call on Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Council members, during the 2020 legislative session, as you all may recall, the city received $1.75 million in state bonding for the Downtown Riverfront project. And we're in the process now of working with deed to finalize the grant agreement process and get reimbursement for those funds. We waited to see how the legislative process played out in relation to Phase Two before finalizing those things, which is why we're doing it now rather than back in 2021. So as part of that process, we just need to verify that we have the appropriate matching dollars. It was a one-to-one match, so we needed to spend locally $1.75 million. To get the $1.75 million, and this resolution highlights what those funding sources are and ensures that we have the match necessary to secure all of those funds. So if the council desires, we need a resolution to that effect and we'll get that out to deed and work towards getting the funds in the door.
Thank you. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll off that.
Thank you, Caroline.
Second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Jim? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Tonight, under presentation of claims, we have claims in the amount of $2,344,387. If there's any questions, we will direct them to Andrew. Not sure we'll get, so anyway.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Yes, Scott.
I have one question that I had visited earlier with Guy about. On the expenses, there's about a $16,000 expense for an air handler HVAC unit. And I was just wondering which facility got that benefit?
That actually is the senior center building. And we had a purchase co-op basically with the kitchen, the meal preparation company that works in that kitchen. They prepare meals for meals by wheels. And they helped with that expense to the tune, I think, of about $13,000, so.
Almost an even split.
Nice partnership with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Guy. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we have two items this evening. The first would be a resolution approving a term sheet for the development agreement for the TIF district for the former flower mill project. And we will call on our community development manager Clara Beck.
Thank you, council. This item tonight is a precursor to a development agreement that you will see in front of you either later this month or into November. But as you are aware, Kevin Bartram is the owner of the mill building and he is just about ready to get started on his redevelopment. City council agreed to a TIF district there that encompasses that mill building. What we have not done yet is to put in place the terms of the development agreement. We were waiting for some final pieces to fall into place with his design and development of the project and we're now at the point where we can get to that. So what you see before you tonight are the terms that have been worked up by Baker Tilly, who helps us with our TIF analysis. Essentially, what we are doing here is we are matching the terms of the TIF to the length of Mr. Bartram's financing. So that was where the gap was deemed to be, was paying off the bank involvement. So the TIF amount, principal amount, and it will be PEGO TIF, is $788,000. We're projecting 21 years of TIF and the estimated annual assistance would be $63,256. So again, this is, these are the terms that we've laid out. Kevin is amenable to these terms. The next step will be to enter into a development agreement with him to set these in place. You may recall when we initially started talking about the mill project, it would be two-phased. This would be to cover Phase One, the hotel project that will be on site. Phase Two, we will revisit when we get closer to that time period, but that would include some housing on the site as well. So I'm doing my best to represent the TIF project well. Bill isn't here and we've got Baker Tilly, who we can call if some questions pop up. But that's just a basic overview of the terms as we see them right now and we'll continue to work with Kevin on those terms to come back to you with an actual development agreement.
Thanks, Clara. And we expect, hopefully, if things continue to move forward, we expect to see a development agreement sometime in November. Is that?
I think we would hope to see it earlier than that if possible, at least internally with staff, just to help match with Kevin's timeline. But yes, you will have a development agreement for you in the beginning of November.
Thank you, Clara. Someone like to offer a resolution approving that term sheet? Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Anyone have any questions for Clara? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Item number two is a letter of intent on the city-owned parking lot adjacent to Shopko, former Shopko site building. And I will again call on Clara Beck.
Thank you. Yes, I did not sit down. This is a newer request and I think it's maybe an exciting one. But as you will recall, the city was at one point in an agreement with Rivers Edge Investment for the purchase of the city-owned parking lot adjacent to the Shopko building when that project was slated to be moving forward. The economic downturn and changes in the project meant that it just didn't make sense to stay in that agreement anymore. That Rivers Edge Development is on hold. They do still retain the Shopko building itself, but have given up any claim to the parking lot. So enter in Good Neighbor Properties. They have expressed an interest in that lot, which could then lend itself to a larger development. At this point in time, they are starting to undertake a market study to see if the project idea that they have would be the right fit for Fergus Falls. And they would like to enter into a letter of intent with the city of Fergus Falls for the purchase of that parking lot in order to secure it and ensure that if they do move forward with their development, that that lot is there for their use. So you will see before you the letter of intent that they have provided. And I think they will also, separate from their discussions with the city, they are in conversation with Rivers Edge Development to look at what it could be to have a larger project on that site. So tonight, our discussion is simply surrounding the parking lot, but please let me know if you have questions about the letter of intent that they've provided.
Thanks, Clara. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to commend you on your work on this and city staff. For those who don't know, Good Neighbor Properties, is that the name of the organization? They have a proven track record of success. They're the ones that redeveloped the Nurses Cottage. They also are the ones behind the Hatchery Row in Battle Lake and as well as the Rune in Alexandria, which is a $38 million mixed-use redevelopment. So the fact that they're interested in this, of course, we have to be realistic. You know, these projects take a long time. It's an uncertain time for development. But the fact that they're, this level of developers, including the last item, we just discussed, the mill, that Kevin Bartram and the money, the amount of money that these high-level developers with a proven track record have and are investing their time and energies into downtown Fergus Falls, I think is something that is a direct result of the investment that the city's made in our downtown. And it's something that I just want to say thank you to the staff and the council for the work on that. This is incredibly exciting. Of course, we want to take it and be realistic and know that there's a long way to go before any development happens. But the fact that this kind of, this level of developers is investing their time and energies in Fergus Falls is exciting stuff. So just want to say thank you to staff for your work behind the scenes on to bring this forward. Questions? Someone like to offer a?
I'll offer it, Your Honor.
Resolution accepting this letter of intent? Thank you.
Second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tom?
So they're just looking at the city piece of this at this point in time?
Correct. There are some separate conversations that are happening, but we'll, I think, get updated on those. But for now, their conversation with the city is in regard to that parking lot.
Yeah, but I think it, I don't know if it mentions here, but they have, they are having conversations with, you know, those developers who own the Shopko building itself, so. Positive stuff. We have a resolution. We have a second. Any other questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. There is no old business, there is no unfinished business and there is no new business that I'm aware of. So unless, Lynn, unless you have anything else?
Lots of announcements just to keep up with.
All right. So do you want to give those announcements, Lynn? Do you want me to? I've got the mic. All right, November 2nd, 7:00 AM, Committee of the Whole meeting. November 2nd also is the bagged leaf pickup beginning at 6:00 AM. November 7th is the next city council meeting. Of course, November 8th is the general election. Polls are open in Fergus Falls from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. If anyone has any questions about, any election-related questions, polling places, et cetera, please call City Hall. Lynn will make sure that you get the information you need for that. November 11th, Veterans Day, most city offices are closed. And November 16th is the morning that we will canvass the, that's a Wednesday morning, I believe, we will canvass the results of the election. And then we also have a special meeting with the school board to discuss a proposal related to the Kirkbright Park. So there's the announcements that I have with that. If anyone else has anything, Jim?
I have one question. I've been asked a couple of times, are people able to?